Just say.
Hey Adrian, are we ready to go? We haven't got the thirty.
Mayor, you're on.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the work session. Today is Monday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's approximately, since we had a little late start, one oh three P M. I am Mayor Enriquez. We will start with a moment of silence for the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces as they protect our interests, as well as the courageous men and women of Las Cruces Police and Fire Department as they keep our city safe twenty-four seven three sixty-five. Join us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll get started with pets of the week. Carol?
Good afternoon. So this week, for our cat of the week, we have Jack. His number is seven eight 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 three. Says, hello there, I'm Jack. I'm just a kitten full of energy and sweetness. I love to play and boy can I zoom. One minute I'm here and the next I'm over there. I'm a bit of a love biter, but only when I get over excited. I promise it's all in good fun. I'm just a little bundle of joy waiting to share my love and energy with you. If you're looking for a sweet energetic companion, I'm your guy. And for the dog of the week, we have Dora. Her number is seven two one five zero. Hello, I'm Dora. I'm a bit shy, but don't let that deter you. I'm just a little cautious when meeting new people, but once I get to know you, I promise we'll be the best of friends. I'm quite young and have a curious spirit. I love exploring new places and sniffing out new smells. I may take a little bit of time to come out of my shell, but with patience and a few treats, I'll be your loyal companion. This week, well, coming up, we're going to be at the farmer's market on Saturday. So go ahead and check out our booth that we have there. And we still have our Clear the Shelter event going on until tomorrow, which means all adoptions are fifty dollars, which is a discount. We're also doing our microchip clinics every Tuesday in this month from four to seven. It's ten dollar per microchip, but at each event, we're gonna have the first fifty pets get microchipped free. And so that's a really awesome opportunity to make sure that if the pets ever get lost, they can get returned to their owners. And if you ever want to check us out, you can visit our website or also find us on social media. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carol. Next on the agenda item, two point one, the American Rescue Plan Act update. Leanne Demushe will start it off. I see a list.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This will be our, I think, our second update on the ARPA. Let me open this presentation. Not quite sure I can follow Dora. She was just too cute. Yes, we have a great lineup for you going over the American Rescue Plan Act, known as ARPA. Just a little bit of background for me. As you know, there was about one point nine trillion dollars of federal stimulus package. The city received two tranches of twelve point four, which was twenty-five, twenty-four point eight million that we've received in total. This was for direct relief to aid governments in response and recovery from the COVID nineteen pandemic. Funding is used to support various focus areas to maximize the impact in Las Cruces, and that's what we're gonna be going over in our presentation on the update. And all these funds, just to let you know, have to be obligated by this December thirty-first, the end of this year, and they have to be spent two years later, December thirty-first of twenty-six. And with that, I would like to invite Liam Beasley, accounting too, from Finance, to go over the financials with you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members. I'm Liam Beasley from the City's Finance Department, and I'll be covering the financial update for all the ARPA funds. All the information I'll be covering is up to date as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. And the first slide is gonna show the total spending for all the different projects combined. The city received about twenty-four point eight million dollars from the U.S. Treasury, and so far, we spent about fourteen point four million, which is fifty-eight percent of the total. The unspent balance is ten million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, and there are unliquidated obligations of just under six million dollars. And what that number refers to are just outstanding contracts and purchase orders we have for the various ARPA projects that we just haven't spent down on yet. And so the unspent and unobligated balance is gonna be four million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand. And so out of the total, eighty-two percent of it is spent and obligated. And I'll break that total down into the various different project categories, starting with public health and safety. The allocation was for two million dollars, and so far, we spent one point six million. The unspent is three hundred and ninety-four thousand, and there are unliquidated obligations of about five and a half thousand. So the unobligated balance is going to be three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, which is eighty-one percent of the total that has been spent and obligated. Visit Las Cruces received a million dollars. They've spent eight hundred and seventy-three thousand. The unliquidated obligations are about fifteen and a half thousand, giving an unobligated balance of a hundred and eleven thousand, which is at eighty-nine percent. Premium pay has been fully spent. That allocation was nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand. The water and sewer projects consist of the Casa Linda Acres reconstruction, as well as the Sewer Connect program, and in total, those received an allocation of three point five million, and the spending so far is one point one million. There are unliquidated obligations of about fifty-six thousand, resulting in an unobligated balance of about two point three million. So we're just over a third spent and obligated there. Capital Projects received six point nine million dollars. They've spent six point three million. Then with outstanding obligations of about three hundred and eighty-one thousand, the balance is two hundred and thirty-three thousand. So that's at ninety-seven percent. Now I'll cover each of the nonprofits that received ARPA funding, starting with the Boys and Girls Club. Their grant was for one million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and so far, they spent eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, and so the unspent is gonna be five hundred and seventeen thousand. And that unspent balance, the remainder is obligated with their contract, and that's gonna be the case for all of the nonprofits. Whatever hasn't been spent is obligated with the contract we have. Catholic Charities received five hundred and fifty thousand. They've spent a hundred and seven thousand, leaving a balance of four hundred and forty-three thousand. The Community Action Agency received one point seven million. There's been spending of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand and a balance of about one point one million. Cruces Creatives had a one million dollar grant, spending of four hundred and six thousand and a balance of five hundred and ninety-four thousand. Pardillo de los Niños had a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, spending of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand and a balance of a hundred and eighty-two thousand. And then Lift Fund received a million dollars, and they are fully spent. Continuing on with the nonprofits, the Mesia Valley Community of Hope received three hundred thousand. They've spent ninety thousand, leaving an unspent of a two hundred and ten thousand. MC Valley Public Housing Authority received three hundred and six thousand. They spent a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and the unspent is a hundred and seventeen thousand. The New Mexico Housing and Community Development Corporation received two million dollars for the Peachtree Project. There hasn't been any spending, but it is fully obligated. And then the workforce programs consist of different grants to five organizations totaling to nine hundred and forty thousand, and as of June thirtieth, that was not spent or obligated. The storefront repair was allocated for a hundred thousand dollars. These are for grants to small businesses. Spending is a hundred and six thousand, which is twenty-seven percent of the total, and the balance is two hundred and ninety-four thousand. And just very recently, that has become fully obligated, but it wasn't as of June thirtieth. And then finally, for the administrative category, the allocation is four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. There's been spending of seventy thousand and unliquidated obligations of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and so the balance is about eighty-one thousand. So that category is eighty-three percent spent and obligated. And you all should have received a handout with a more detailed breakdown of the financials if you're interested, but that wraps up the financials. And now I'll turn it over to Chief Jason Smith, who will discuss the fire department projects.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of City Council, Fire Chief Jason Smith. So real quick update on our spending for ARPA funding. The last remaining balance that you see on your sheet has been pretty much fully obligated based off of council action, the last council meeting. We've secured our training through Ascend, so we'll be bringing additional online training as well as in-person training to our firefighter EMTs for the remainder of this fiscal year. That's in two basic phases of it. Phase one is more of a ongoing EMS refresher. We're a little committed, and they'll talk about topics related to EMS, like respiratory, cardiovascular, cardiac health. And then the second training will be in-person training with possibly a cadaver lab, so in-depth advanced training for our paramedics. Also, just an update, our second class of advanced EMTs, it's another class of eight, they'll be in their semester of school right now. They should graduate in December, and the previous class from last semester has graduated, and we're starting to see those providers licensed at the advanced level.
Mayor, Council, for the record, Leanne Demushe, again, Finance Director. I'd like to introduce Lorena Lozano, who is the Director of Marketing with Visit Las Cruces.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. I am Lorena Lozano, Visit Las Cruces Director of Marketing, for the record. The Visit Las Cruces program was awarded one million dollars in ARPA funding to address the significant negative economic impact to tourism, travel, and hospitality industry during the COVID nineteen pandemic. The final rule specifically identified this industry is disproportionately affected. The funds have been utilized with the intent to generate spending with local businesses. This not only includes hotels and restaurants, but also businesses such as special event rental companies, attractions, tour companies, pet boarding facilities, and many more. Visit Las Cruces has strategically allocated funds for immediate, short-term, and long-term recovery projects. Evidence of the positive impact can be seen in the lodgers' tax revenue recovery. So they have returned to and surpassed pre-pandemic levels. In FY eighteen, lodgers' tax amounted to approximately two point two million dollars. At the end of FY twenty-four, it ended at nearly two point eight million, and that's a twenty-seven percent increase from FY eighteen. This is important to note that during the pandemic, lodgers' tax also covered a shortfall of approximately five hundred thousand dollars for the convention center for operations and bond debt of the convention center due to the mandated closure per public health orders. And the next slide provides an update on ongoing and upcoming projects. It is important to note that traditionally, local advertising is kept at a minimum as the goal is to advertise outside of a one-hundred-mile radius to attract overnight visitors. But ARPA allows for local spending to assist in local business recovery efforts. So one of the positives of ARPA is the fact that Las Cruces and the residents in Las Cruces are able to see some of our advertising as well. Local advertising includes radio, digital and broadcast commercials, social media, online ads, search engine marketing, highway billboards, and we have El Paso International Airport advertising right now in terminals A, B, and in the baggage claim area. So on this slide, you're gonna see one of our newest billboards. It's located on I-ten West between El Paso and Las Cruces. We also successfully launched the Sunseeker Trails Pass. It promotes the abundant outdoor recreation opportunities in Las Cruces and encourages spending at local eateries and retail locations. Outdoor recreation is one of the fastest-growing tourism drivers in New Mexico. We have also hosted several social media influencers and will continue to do so this year. The influencers provide immediate exposure resulting in visitation and spending in local businesses. Also, the Spanish Visitors Guide was recently completed and is being distributed in both print and digital formats. Construction on the Las Cruces letter sign should be completed by FY twenty-five's second quarter. The sign will be located on the east side of the convention center. That it is strategically placed to drive business to the university and convention center corridor. Visit Las Cruces has spent or encumbered eighty-nine percent of its ARPA funding as of June thirtieth and ninety-six percent to date. It is on schedule to meet the December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four funding obligation deadline. Mayor, City Council, thank you for your time. Next up should be Carl Clark, Assistant Director of Las Cruces Utilities.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Carl Clark, Assistant Utilities Director. The water sewer projects, I call them the septic tank elimination projects that we're completing. We received approximately one point three million in ARPA funding for this. We spent approximately one point two, and with the remaining of ninety-nine thousand, actually, that number has changed since it was updated by Leanne. It's approximately fifty-six thousand now that remains in there. We created a matrix that added in the top priority, high priority, and the low to moderate income residential areas and identified a hundred and fifty-five residents in that area. We sent out letters, mailings, and we had seventy-seven respond. To date, we've converted approximately seventy-one residential areas. The household conversions pending were six when I put this together, but it's down to two. We're gonna complete one this week, and then next week, we'll be done with the final one, and that will exhaust the one point three million dollars, so that will all be used up. Here's some of the areas that we did the work. Solpik subdivision, Council District Two. The green shaded areas are the ones that are completed. The yellow are the ones that remain. Here we have Alameda Acres Estates. This is a top priority area. We have water well that's within a thousand feet of these areas here, and you can see we completed everything in that section. Then we get to Hacienda Acres. You can see all the green areas, quite a few jumped onto the program. We still had two pending in there. It should only be one now. We do have water wells within a thousand feet of that area now, since we own the Horn Out of Water system. So, but that was the final area, and like I said, we'll be done next week and looking for more money to do more work, so. Next up, I believe, is David Sidio, Public Works Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, David Sidio, your Public Works Director, and I'll be going over the ARPA spending related to capital projects. First, we have Casa Linda Acres, which incorporates Avenida Blanco, Caixa del Sol, and Caixa del Encanto. This is a full reconstruction project that will include roadway, sidewalk, lighting, drainage with green infrastructure, and utilities, gas, water, and sewer. We're anticipating starting construction in November going through August of twenty-five. Now, the pre-construction meeting for this project is scheduled for tomorrow. We will have a better timeline of construction start after tomorrow. This is what we were anticipating. The project costs five point three million. Of that, two point two is ARPA funding for water, sewer, and drainage on the project. Next, we have the Transit Maintenance and Operation Facility. This project received two point six million dollars of ARPA funding. To date, ninety-eight percent has been spent on the construction of the facility. The remaining two percent will be spent by quarter two in FY twenty-five, so by December of this calendar year. Another project receiving ARPA funding was the two thousand and eighteen Go Bonds. The walking jogging trails, Unidad Park, Animal Services Center of Mesia Valley, and Rinco Nada Dog Park, all receive various amounts of funding. Those are spent at a hundred percent. The East Mesa Recreation Sports Complex received three point three six million. Of that, ninety-two percent has been spent. The remaining eight percent will be spent on shade structures throughout, EPE infrastructure at the complex, and if any funds remain from that, we will incorporate those into the continuation in the scope of work of the complex. Lastly, for the capital projects, we have the Mobile Integrated Health Unit. This received three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Of that, eighty-six percent has been spent on Desert Peaks Architect, who has done the design, completed the design development for that project. The remaining funds will be used towards the construction of the facility once that is fully funded. And now I'll pass it on to Gabby Pratt, Grants Manager from Finance.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Gabriela Pratt, Grant Manager in the Finance Department. I'm going to talk to you about our grant, our subgrants to the local community. I'll start off with the nonprofits, and then I'll hand it off to two other staff members to fill you in on the specific projects in housing and in workforce. As the department implemented its subgranting program for the local nonprofits, we found that we needed additional technical assistance to be able to ensure compliance with not only our responsibilities under the ARPA grant, but also the subgrante's responsibilities. They had a lot of questions. It is a complicated grant. And so we reached out through an RFP to the community and found through that Clifton Larson Allen, which is an auditing firm we call CLA, and that is headed up, our particular project is headed up by Laura Beltran Schmitz, who is a local, who is a Las Cruces native. And Laura's in the audience. She's the principal at CLA, and she is the team leader. She's here just in case you have any questions specific to the work that they're doing for us. Katrina Carlton is our project manager. She's the director at CLA. She works from the East Coast, so it was hard for her to get in today. But they are our leaders on this team, and we've had them on contract now for a few months, and they hit the ground running. They've been really, really helpful, not only to the finance staff, but also to the nonprofits. The first subgrant that I'll talk to you about is to Mesia Vality Community of Hope. Their funded project is Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund. Thus far, they've served thirty-seven individuals with this money. Eighteen landlords have been assisted to encourage them to rent to folks who may not have the credit or history or rental history to be able to qualify under a regular situation, but rather, you know, to assist them to mitigate risk, just like the name implies, which includes repairs of damage to units or helping them bring units up to code. There is also an incentive to rent bonus that landlords can take advantage of, and thus far, one landlord has taken advantage of that part of the program. Community Action Agency of Southern New Mexico is implementing the Family Prosperity Program. Thus far, they've served a hundred and fifty families, each of which receive a stipend of five hundred dollars per month for eighteen months. They receive case management, and it's specifically to help them improve their financial situation through learning about money planning, financial management, as well through learning about money planning, financial management, as well as investment in education. They partner with NMSU Crimson Research to do the evaluation for this particular program. In addition to the 150 families served, they also engage 100 families who are used as a control group, and those families receive between $25 and $50 per month, depending on the number of surveys that they have to complete as part of the research model. The Boys and Girls Club of Las Cruces was funded to assist them in their capital campaign. They have recently, and by recently I mean January of this year, purchased the video for property, which was, I believe was vacant for a while. They have engaged an architect to complete their design and they're about 50% completed and they're working on their environmental assessment with the assistance of our housing program. They've launched their capital campaign in February of '24 and they've already raised approximately 40% of their capital needs for the expansion and renovation of the facility. Catholic Charities of Southern New Mexico, sorry about that, has thus far aided approximately 100 individuals and families with rent, mortgage, utilities, and mental health services. They've also, in addition to the direct payments that they've made to landlords on behalf, or to the electric company, for example, they also work through partnerships with local schools to garner referrals as well as to expand and develop a mental health support program in the Las Cruces area. I did fail to mention, they also provide direct mental health services. Jardín de los Niños thus far has served 487 individuals. That is mostly children who receive services through their social emotional learning program, which is, it's therapy provided in a group setting and in a learning environment so that they're able to help children who have experienced emotional trauma better adapt to social situations. They also provide therapy services, which includes screenings for a variety of mental health disorders, as well as treatment plans and trauma and support of just general well-being. And they call this the Family Success Program. Cruces Creatives has reached almost 7,000 students in 41 schools within Las Cruces Public Schools, and they've provided a synopsis of their educator surveys. Of course, these are preliminary results. We should have more final results at a future meeting. Their interventions have been proved successful to increase student engagement, to help students build social and emotional skills. They've also helped them see the future in education for them through academic and career opportunities, and they also have been able to teach these young people how academic skills are necessary to use in the real world. You know, we never think we're going to use algebra until we stand in front of a recipe that we need to double or half, right? And I know, I tell my niece that all the time. She's 24 and she's like, "Why do I need to know this?" And I'm like, "'Cause when you bake a cake, you're going to need to know this." She laughed. She doesn't laugh anymore. So now I'm going to invite Natalie Green to talk to you about the housing.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Natalie Green for the record. Housing and Neighborhood Services is managing two projects. The first is the Oak Street renovation. Oak Street is an apartment complex for veterans experiencing homelessness. It's a 22-unit complex, but only 20 of the units needed some renovations. So we've replaced the windows, flooring, cabinets, installed new showers and kitchens. We also are doing some heating and cooling improvements and installing a new roof. This funding was matched with our community development block grant funds, and so we're utilizing both funding sources to support this project. The second one is the Peachtree Canyon Apartments. We are on schedule for the closing to occur next week, so we're in that final push of underwriting. So staff will be pretty tied up until closing day. It is 144 units for phase one, and then as soon as we close, we'll have a groundbreaking to follow and then we'll start expending those funding sources. And now I'll turn the presentation over to Selena Morales for Economic Development. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Administration, Selena Morales with Economic The City of Las Cruces has allocated $400,000 from ARPA funds to economic development through a resolution for the storefront repair grant program. This initiative is designed to support the economic recovery of small businesses that have experienced property damage due to the negative impacts of COVID-19 pandemic. The grant provides funding to cover the cost of repairing property damage and reimburses business owners for out-of-pocket expenses for up to $2,500. As of today, we've spent $138,908, leaving a remaining balance of $261,092. The program will continue to accept applications for small businesses until all funds are exhausted or by December 31st, 2026, whichever comes first. So far, 83 businesses have benefited from this initiative. And I'll pass it over to Irene Bada from Workforce Development.
It helps when the person right before you is the same height. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Irene Bada with Economic Development. The following are the ARPA workforce development projects. Agreements were finalized this past June, and the following are updates for each of the five projects. I do want to mention that I'm also in the process of working with finance to get these projects, awards allocated to the projects. So we begin with Automate Up. In partnership with, excuse me, Mesia Valley Economic Development Alliance, this project is awarded $100,000 with the goal of providing upskilled training around advanced manufacturing for up to 100 participants, as well as helping to expand industry sectors and grow the user base. Currently, Mavita is currently working with local organizations to identify opportunities for training in coding, aerospace, life and biosciences, in addition to advanced and additive manufacturing. Trainings for certifications will be provided by both local training and educational institutions, including NMSU and DCC, as well as online industry-recognized entities. Next is our apprenticeship program. In partnership with the Independent Electrical Contractors of Southern New Mexico, this project was awarded $200,000 with the goal of increasing the number of apprenticeship opportunities for up to 100 participants, as well as expanding training opportunities for journey persons. Enrollment has begun for the Fall 2024 class, as well as recruitment for continued training for journey persons. This year, we have a goal of recruiting 50 new apprentices, and there are currently 25 new apprentices enrolled in the program. Next is our Elevate Your Future, or the Transitional Job Training Program. In partnership with the Doñana Community College, this project is awarded $240,000 with the goal of training individuals that are at or below the poverty line to support the goal of meaningful employment for up to 150 participants. Participants will develop proficiency in soft skills, career development, and financial literacy to enhance economic and social mobility. They will also receive a $1,000 stipend at the completion of training. To date, the first cohort is underway with 21 participants currently enrolled. This is a four-to-six-week training program. The first cohort is scheduled to be completed at the end of this month, with the second cohort beginning in October. Actually, I need to go back one. Next is our Pre-Aprenticeship Program. In partnership with the Las Cruces Public Schools, this program was awarded $100,000 with the goal of supporting pre-apprenticeship programming for up to 400 hours and boost the number of industry-recognized certifications, as well as expanding employment opportunities. We are working with the Las Cruces Public Schools and the New Mexico Workforce Connection to conduct an orientation next week with students to begin recruitment and enrollment into the program. We will also be working with the Las Cruces Public Schools and New Mexico Workforce Connection to conduct monthly monitoring and reporting of students' progress, and we hope to recruit 30 participants for this year. And lastly is our Reaching for the Stars Program. This is our Childcare Provider Accelerator Program. In partnership with Engage, this project is awarded $300,000 with the goal of expanding capacity of childcare by up to 50%, providing quality care through the New Mexico Childhood Education Focus Program, as well as addressing equity by offering support and resources with a $10,000 grant. This funding will assist registered home providers to obtain the necessary equipment and materials required by the state to operate as a licensed home provider. Recruitment and enrollment for the first cohort has begun. Applications are currently being reviewed and selection will take place in the next few weeks, with programming beginning in October. Applicants must be a registered home provider or in the process of becoming a registered home provider, be based within the city of Las Cruces, with the goal of entering the Early Childhood Education Department Focus Program to become a licensed childcare provider and work towards meeting quality standards laid out by FOCUS and the State Licensing Department. And with that, I will hand it over to Leanne Beasley with Finance.
I want to briefly talk about OpenGov, which is a software and transparency tool that's available to the council members as well as members of the public. It's integrated on the city's website, lascruces.gov, and these pages provide an overview of what ARPA is, as well as financial information. So it'll show some graphs which communicate directly with our accounting system, and these graphs and financial information are going to be updated on a daily basis. And I'm actually going to go to the city's website and show you where you can find this So here's the front page of lascruces.gov, and then at the top bar, you'll go over to Government. Hover over that, and then on the left side, Options, hover over Transparency and Accountability. And then the second option there is going to be the ARPA page. And so at the top, we have some background information about ARPA. And then the first graph you see will show the budget, as well as the actual spending for all the different project categories. And these graphs are interactive, so you can hover over different spending categories like operating and capital, and also click on any one of those and it'll give you a more detailed breakdown. And you can reset the graph to its original look by using the button at the top. Underneath, we have some useful links such as to the quarterly reports we submit to the U.S. Treasury, as well as various resolutions related to ARPA. And then the latter half of the page, as you go down, will break down each of those different project categories, kind of explain a little bit about the projects, and then each section will have a graph dedicated just to that category as well. And then towards the middle of the page, in the Community Grants section, there will be a link where you can learn more about the nonprofit funding. And so following that, it'll take you to a different webpage, and at the top, you can select from the nine different nonprofits. And underneath, it'll give you some information about what they're accomplishing with their grant, as well as have a graph specific just to spending from that particular grant. So this information is available to the council members and you can refer other people to it if they request it, but I just wanted to make you all aware that we have this available. And I'll turn it back over to Leanne Demouch, who will wrap up the presentation.
Mayor, Council, Leanne Demouch, your Finance Director. Just wanted to go over, we told you about where our money has, or is, or has been, and I wanted to complete showing you that we do have some projects that are totally all spent. Under health, public health and safety, the police department has spent all of their funds and have received everything that they had needed for the ARPA, which was the smart technology, the communications, victim and advocate vehicles. All of those have been received and they're using them right now. Under fire, they have received the MIH vehicles as well. And the Lift Fund, as Leanne had presented to you earlier, has been, all of the money has been received by the Lift Fund and has been spent by the Lift Fund, and these were used to revitalize small businesses. And then, of course, the premium pay. With that, if you have any questions, I know it's been a lot to absorb, but I have all of the staff behind me if you have additional questions. And we did invite all of the nonprofits to come today as well.
Okay, well, thank you, Leanne, and thank you, staff, for the presentation and the update. And I'll turn, Council, any questions? Councilor Flores?
Are you surprised? Nobody heard that, right? Okay. So I have a question. If you could go to page 20, I have a lot of questions, but page 28, please. Okay. So this is for Mavita, and how much were they, you know, when money is allocated, when money is allocated to an entity, you know, it was very clear what the outcomes were for a lot of the organizations that did receive money. But we don't have any outcomes for Mavita, and I want to know why we don't have a report on that. And I, I mean, what I've deducted is that there hasn't been any achievement. So I, and I'm, you know, just keep an eye on Mavita, you know, because it's our economic development thing, so, yeah.
So, Mayor, Councilor Flores, that's a really great question. When we brought these to council, it was very close to the end of the fiscal year. And so since that fiscal year was ending, we were working with all of these participants in the workforce program to get them all set up as a vendor in our system. And so they're all set up. We have opened POs for all of these, except for one. We still have one that we're working on right now to set them up totally into a vendor. And then they've received their POs and should be working on that. So at the next update that we have for you, you should be seeing some results on all of these workforce programs.
Well, I'm just wondering, well, okay, so there's a reason in terms of the administration of the funding that was provided, or was...
Mayor, Councilor Flores, yes, ma'am. It's administrative or just our internal controls. We do have to, you know, look after this money. That's one of the reasons why we reached out and contracted with CLA, is to make sure that we do everything correctly, being that this is money from the U.S. Treasury. So we were just, we did have to set them all up as a vendor, and that took a little bit of longer time than we had expected.
Yes, but it seems to me that this is, when was this money distributed or the agreements reached?
June.
Of this year?
It was June that the resolution came before you, and our fiscal year ended on June 30th. So we've been working on setting them up as a vendor and getting the POs open after the fiscal year.
So that's the reason, because it's been just to, okay, so you'll report to us that, yes, all this stuff has been done. We have the apprenticeship program going and we're going to have all these little geniuses with jobs. Okay, and then I have a question for Carl, Mr. Clark. Thank you, Leanne, and thank you.
Mayor, Council.
Ms. Bada.
Hi.
Hi. So my question, Carl, is on the sewer work that's been done in Hacienda Acres. There were some homes within those plats that hadn't been serviced, and do you know why? Did they do their own? Because some of them have done, very few, but...
Correct, Mayor, Councilor. So, yes, some of them selected not to participate? Yeah.
Go figure.
Exactly. So we sent out plenty of letters and we only had 77 that replied. So we sent out plenty of letters, and we only had 77 that replied, and I think there was 150 I showed on there, so it was kind of a strange thing that people didn't want the free money. I'm not sure, but we had people directly tell us, no, we're not interested.
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
And what about north of 70, Highway 70? I know that there were people at the last big meeting that we all, that the city held, can't remember when, but there were a lot of people who were north of 70 who wanted to know why they had been left out, and I, I'm still wondering, did letters go out to everybody in that area?
So Mayor, Counselor Flores, yes, letters went out to everybody that, we went out and installed a septic sewer main, I mean, I'm sorry, a sewer main in front of their property. And so it just went out to those, because if they didn't have a sewer main, I wasn't able to connect them to municipal sewers. They had to have a sewer main, and they're out in front of the roadway there. So like Rising Sun, Caidera Rancho, those all had sewer installed with the legislative funding that we received. And so there was something that they could connect to now. And then at that point, we reached out to everybody that was along the sewer main that had not connected, and we sent them a letter, and some responded and some did not. And then we even, especially in Hacienda Acres, we went and knocked on doors on those that we didn't get anything back, and either they weren't there, I'm not sure why. I knocked on a few myself, and I couldn't get anybody to open the doors, this was after the work hours. And, yeah, it just, it was kind of a strange thing. Then we also found people that connected illegally, so. They said, yeah, we have sewer, and it's like, well, I don't show you having sewer.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
So when it's illegal, what does that mean? Does it mean it wasn't done? We don't know if it was done probably.
Well, they didn't notify us of the connection, yeah, they, somehow they hired a plumber that didn't go through permitting.
Okay. And so then, north of 70, is there any, well, this is just ARPA money reporting, so, yeah, so that's, I'm still concerned about funding for that, so I, and I know you'll keep an eye out, and so will Leanne.
Yeah, so we'll continue to ask for legislative funding for future projects.
Yeah, we can go to CIP, yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, and then we're, we want to word it in there so we can try and get them, not only can we install the sewer mains, we can also get them to convert from their septics over. So that's a big expense for them, but we're working with the state to make sure that we're allowed to do that, and the anti-donation doesn't come into play.
Well, we should be allowed to do it.
Yeah, we should be allowed.
Because, you know, you can't have people randomly getting rid of their septic tanks. I mean, it would take an engineer, it would take, you know, a lot of science and stuff. But thank you so much, Mr. Clark, and thank you, Leanne.
You're welcome.
Ms. Demouch, and thank you, Mayor. I have other questions, too. Never mind, I'll just talk to people later. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? No?
Thank you. Thank you so much, everybody, for this thorough presentation. I'll start with some big questions first, Leanne. I think last time you all presented, gosh, I don't remember at this point when that was, but I remember feeling really confident at the end of that meeting regarding the timeline of obligated funds. Today, I'm a little bit nervous, 4 million is a big chunk of money, I don't want to send a single penny back. And so I'm just curious if you can speak to that, Leanne, because this 4.3-ish million dollars in obligated funds doesn't mean that we have money for, because I have plenty of ideas, so I don't, I think a lot of us do. That's not what it means, right? Like, those 4 million dollars are designated somewhere.
So Mayor, Counselor Ben Como, I brought Liam up here, but if you'll see, when, like, when Carl, when Mr. Clark was talking, he's, he's already giving you updates because he's continuously spending this money. What, what Mr. Beasley was showing you was at the end of June, June 30th, which was the end of our fiscal year. So we're constantly moving on this. As you know, our funds are moving all the time. We do, just recently for, I just did a program with the storefront repair, where we have actually oblig, we found a way through the U.S. Treasury, we talked with them, of how we can obligate the storefront repair, because we have to open an individual PO with every single individual business. So we never know, Selena never knows who's going to walk in and say, I need these funds. So in order to be able to obligate that, we did an MOU that Mr., that our city manager had signed with Elizabeth, our Economic Development Director, and so we're able to obligate those. So trust me, Counselor, I am on it. I'm obligating it.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So you figured out a way with the treasury's permission to say, we can't possibly know every individual business that's going to come in here, but we are, it has been obligated to a specific program.
It has. Counselor, it has been obligated, and I, I'm not quite sure, I think on, and that's what, like, with Irene's presentation, all of those workforce, we just opened the POs for all of those except Engage, like, just last week.
Okay.
So all of that has been obligated since June 30th.
Okay.
So I will honestly tell you, I, I have made a commitment to make sure that every dime is obligated.
Thank you, Leanne. I appreciate that so much, and obviously, yeah, I think the workforce development programs are the ones that make me the most nervous. Obviously, we went, no one's fault, right? Like, we went through a little bit of a situation with that to finally get us to this moment, and so, but Leanne, you're exuding a lot of confidence, and I deeply appreciate that.
No, it will be all obligated, Counselors.
Lesson's my anxiety. Okay, thank you. Okay, so three months, you're, you're saying yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Love it. I just wanted to really get the nail, the head on the nail, or whatever they say. Okay, I have some, just more specific questions for a couple of the nonprofits, or are they able to come up? Is that who? Okay, great. I had a question for Nicole and the Landlord Mitigation Fund. Nicole, I wondered if, I'll talk as you calm down. I just wondered if you could tell us a little bit about those 18 landlords? Are they individual housing units? Are they landlords of apartment complexes? They, they were brand-new landlords to Community of Hope, those kinds of questions.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Nicole Martinez, Mucia Valley Community of Hope. Thanks for the question, Mayor Protem. It's a mix of landlords, mostly existing landlords. We, we've seen a reduction in landlords that we've been partnering with over the few years, just in terms of, like, the portability of the rents, and so whenever we have damages in excess of what the, the security deposit might cover, then we can turn to landlord risk mitigation. So it's, it's mostly existing landlords. We have been able to incentivize bringing on at least one new landlord, and I know, we've spent more since we sent in that original data. And also, ours was kind of behind, because while there were some ARPA issues with the city and the contracts, we went after private funding for it, because we had already done that with a foundation, and we asked them to reinvest in that program, because it was so successful, and so they did. So we were waiting till we expended those funds to start kicking in using the city funds.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you, Nicole. That's all my questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Dawn, I had a couple, just a couple of questions for you about the Family Prosperity Program. And honestly, just, I'm wondering how many months the program has been going already? I know that it, you had a ton of applications, and that process was long. So if you could talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Dawn Hummer with Community Action Agency. We initiated our first payment in March, so I'm not going to mark April, May, June, July, August. Next payment, I think, will go out, our six-month payment will go out in September.
Awesome. Can you tell us about the selection process of the 150?
Yeah, so the selection process, what we did was, we had some, several kind of big launch events that we did, but we also sent flyers, we just did a lot of outreach to kind of cover the whole city. And what we did was, we set up a very simplistic online application that had the questions, you know, what income was, geographic location, whether or not there was a child in the home under 16, that just listed the criteria. And then what we did from that is that everyone who kind of passed that initial process, we assigned them numbers. We sent the numbers to our research partner, which was our Crimson Research Partner, they randomly selected whether or not they were going to be in the comparison group, which is what is normally called a treatment group, we just kind of stay away from that word. So we have a comparison, and we have an active, our comparison and our active, which the active received the payments, the comparison is more like the control group. And so they just randomly picked until we had it. Once we had that, that's when we went in and got all the documentation and did orientations and worked with the families, because otherwise, it would have been 2,000 people that we would have been doing that with, so we just waited until they kind of went through that initial process.
That's amazing. Thank you so much.
It's amazing. I do just want to say that this program has been absolutely just unreal. I mean, just, we, because of some of the delays that we had in the ARPA funding, we had a little bit of funding and some research dollars, and we started a pilot program and hatch with 12 families. It's not a lot, but 12 is better than zero. And the success stories that we have just out of 12 families is absolutely unreal. And even with this, my colleague was talking to me about a participant in the Los Cruces Project that started a home visiting program with her siblings, she's enrolled back at DACC, so it has been wonderful.
Thank you, Dawn.
So thank you so much for the question.
Yeah, I can't wait to hear more, Dawn, as you get closer to the end.
There's going to be a lot more coming. It's been wonderful, the families are resilient and just absolutely fantastic.
Thank you for your work and all you do. Thank you. That's all my question. And then, lastly, my last question was for the Lift Up Fund. Is anybody here?
Mayor, Counselor Ben Como, since those funds had already been spent, the last update that we gave, they had spent all of their funds, so they had, they're not here today.
Oh, my gosh, I don't remember that at all. Is that information in the link that you showed in OpenGov?
Yes, yes.
Okay, wonderful.
Counselor, it is in there.
I'll go revisit that. And then, I don't know, Mayor, I guess, I don't have any specific questions for the other nonprofits, but if they're here, maybe they would like to, okay, awesome. Thank you so much, Leanne, and everybody.
Is there any other questions by council? Not seen none. Yeah, any members of the public that are nonprofit organizations would like to come up and share?
I'm Sandy Smith from Cruces Creatives. Last time I came in, I brought some stuff for you to touch. I wanted to do that again, just so that you could kind of see what's going on. So Cruces Creatives has been working on some educational programs. This cool little guy that I'm going to put on a tray is a robot design that's getting ready to go to the Robot Combat Club. This particular one is being designed by a seven-year-old, and you'll notice the grading on the little front, they're learning how to change the 3D printer colors. This is a project that we've got fourth and fifth graders working on right now. So they do the design digitally, then the laser or the cricket cuts them out. Let me turn it on. The kids then do the sewing and the stuffing, and they do the soldering to get the lights going. I've left this one, this one is a teacher model, I've left it open, so you can kind of see inside, and one of the fun things that we get to do is, after we've cut out the outside, we shred the, the extra felt, and it goes in on the inside, so this is just for fun touching. And then this one is one that we are doing with older students. It's called a layered resin painting. I don't have the cells with me today, but we also have another batch of the layered resin that are focused on plant cell and a, an animal cell, with each of the, the components of the cell, and then it's got a little lid over the top of it that labels it. But this is a sneaky way to teach some engineering and advanced thinking, because you have to actually start painting in reverse while you're doing this one, and then it's a fun one, just to talk about some of the chemistry of resin, so. As a person who works with physical things, I think it's just fun to share. Thank you all.
Excuse me?
Oh, thank you. Oh, you had a question for her?
Yes, just a comment. I want to thank you for everything you do at Cruces Creatives.
It's a great place.
It's just a wonderful place, and it's, I encourage everybody to go and visit. It's amazing, all the offer, you know, people learn how to use computers and dance some, and it's just like a, almost a museum, it's, but it's like, and a workshop.
Yeah, we tend to think of it as more like a gym, only instead of exercise equipment, it's making equipment, and if anybody wants to come take a field trip and have a tour, I'm happy to do that for you.
Yes, and it really appeals to all ages and all, all ages. I've seen people, small kids and women who are maybe even older than I am, who are doing different things, so, so thank you, and give everybody my warm regards.
Thank you. The ARPA funding allows us to do a lot of the youth programming, but overall, we are also serving the broader community, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. Is there any other nonprofit that would like to come up?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Ashley Chavaria with the Boys and Girls Club. I just wanted to come up, thank you guys again for the ARPA funding, and give you all a quick update. You saw kind of where we're at, we're in the middle of a capital campaign, we were very excited to also receive some funding designated by Gabe Boskus, in the amount of 1.466 million, and I just got that contract, so that's going through HUD. We are deep into the architecture, we pretty much have the entire layout of the building finalized, I'm at a point now where I'm like picking door by door, and, yeah, it's a lot of fun, but we, of course, have a lot of money to raise still to get the project complete. We were hoping to get some demolition done this year, that might be on hold, because we are in the middle of that environmental assessment, and so we're just waiting for the boxes to get checked, and, you know, I think the, the city and the HUD department has been super helpful in guiding us through this process. Once that is all clear, then we'd like to get the interior demolition done, that will more than likely spend out the rest of the ARPA funding. But that was kind of the plan for it, to, you know, the pre-construction, and then all the while, we're still working to raise money. I am waiting and should hear any day now on a funder that could take us over the halfway mark of our goal, so that's exciting. And then we will continue to be out in the community, asking for support, we're excited, we will be, most of you are aware of the longtime partnership we've had with Lou and Mary Hinson, and so to honor their legacy, we are going to be hopefully naming the basketball court, Lou and Mary Hinson Court, and so we'll be doing a little kickoff event for that later this month. And then we are always searching for capital campaign committee members, and we have a pretty small but mighty committee right now, but we're looking to add to that, because those are the ones that are really making it happen, going out, talking to people, and trying to get support. So that's where we're at, we're still hopeful to be, I keep telling people, we're still hopeful to be opening the doors and welcoming kids into the building in 2026. I'm just not going to say if it's going to be January or December, we'll see where, where we are with raising the funds. Thank you, guys.
Oh, thank you. Did anyone have?
I just have a little question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chavaria. So I am just curious, so are all those theaters going to be gutted, or, but the structure will remain as it is, and then all the other things, it'll be gutted and then redesigned?
Yeah, so the entire, the inside, the outside structure will remain, of course, we'll cut some windows to let some sunlight in, because it was a dark building, because it was a theater, and then, you know, complete remodel inside, and then the, the goal is to also add a gymnasium. The theaters were just too narrow to get a gym out of it, so we'd be adding a gym, and then, of course, we'll have outdoor play space and green space for the kids to run around, and it, hopefully, I mean, it's a, the renderings, if you haven't seen them, you can find them on our website, it's going to be a really cool design, and just a really great space for, for our kids and teens.
How many acres?
It sits on almost four acres, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question? No, thank you, Ms. Chavaria. No, thank you, Ms. Chavaria.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, my name is Lori Martinez, and I work for Engage New Mexico, I am with the, we're working on the Child Care Accelerator Project that is specifically to support our home childcare providers, we have since received some updated data, just to show you some updated numbers on the need for this project, if it's, would it be okay if I looked that up in here, or pulled it up? Okay, I can...
I have it.
I wanted to show you the data, but our data partner is the Center for Community Analysis at NMSU, we're looking at the numbers between 2022 and 2023, so this project is to support our home-based providers specifically, because what we saw happen during the pandemic, there is a childcare crisis across the country, particularly with infant and toddler providers, but what we saw in Doniana County during the pandemic was the, in New Mexico, we allow for licensed centers, and also home-based providers who can be registered or licensed, and so during the pandemic, we lost a lot of providers in both centers and home, and the center-based providers bounced back, we're back at pre-pandemic levels, actually higher, but our home-based providers didn't come back, they're going away and they're staying away, hence the need for this project, so we're super grateful to the city and Irene, and the Economic Development Department for noticing that need, they presented data to you all last October, what we ran in December was, we have updated data between 2022 and 2023, now, we run our data by school district, not by the city, city boundaries, but what we can tell you from 2023 compared to 2022, is that in 2022, in the Las Cruces Public School District, we had 245 providers, by 2023, that had dropped down to 20, 230, that's center and home-based, but we lost 102 registered home slots and 264 licensed center slots, we did increase in some of our home provider license slots, and so what we're, our goals for this project are that, as we get our home-based providers to license status, when you hear focus or five stars, it's the same thing, as a childcare provider, that provides some sustainability for them, because they receive much higher reimbursement levels from the state, but also, it's a much higher quality of care for the kids that are in the program, and so there are a number of efforts that are going on, one reason this effort stands out is because statewide, there is finally the attention starting to be paid to childcare that it deserves and that it needs for, for our kids, but also for the state of New Mexico's economy, and so what you'll be seeing and hearing more of in the next year is the attempts to implement, well, to fund and implement a wage and career ladder, so that our childcare workers are paid fair and dignified wages, it's critically important that that wage and career ladder, as it's implemented, takes into account not only the childcare educators' education, but their years of experience, and so the state, you'll see, during the upcoming legislative session, you'll see that likely coming up, and so it is really important at the state level that they are seeing that our local communities and local governments are making these investments in childcare as well, so I just wanted to impress upon you all the importance of this kind of work, and thank you once again.
Oh, thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, well, thank you again, Leanne, and staff, for the presentation and the update, I think that was the only item we had on the agenda, so, looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved, seconded.
Does this sound a motion to adjourn the work session? Counselor McClure?
Yes.
Counselor Matisse is absent, Counselor Graham?
Yes.
Counselor Coran?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Ben Como?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. You ready?
You ready?
So next, we'll have the agenda setting for the September 16th meeting.